The flag raises to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, police pan?
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Couch. Alderwoman Zerwig, here. Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers. Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Openfoos.
Here.
Alderwoman Brimfield.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Okay, uh, city administrators report.
Um, other than the routine things on my report, you may have noticed that we have installed the two-hour parking signs on the lot up at Market and Highway sixty-
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one.
Yeah, correct.
And, uh, the, uh, we ordered the truck and it came in and we've got the parts being made for a snow glow. Uh, we didn't get the spreaders in time for the snow that we ordered, but hopefully the ones we have while working have had to be kind of patched together and as we, as we're going through the, the snow removal, uh, there's been some, Channel Five was in town and somebody said something about equipment breakdowns, so they come out and want to be interviewed about equipment break-downs. And I didn't see it, but the truth is that we did have some, uh, equipment problem. One was a starter went out, but they had it back in service within thirty, forty-five minutes. Uh, and, and, and the other was a power takeoff on, on one of the trucks and it didn't happen in kind of until later in the, in the snow, so there, there was no significant period of time where we weren't removing snow and, and, and it didn't affect our ability to perform. What affected it was a lot of snow. And, uh, you know, you spend four hours working, you go back to where you started and there's four inches on the ground again. Um, so I, I think the report was a bit misleading, although we did have some issues that we were, we were able to, to manage. You probably, uh, on the, uh, contract on the, the work from Parkwood to, uh, Progress Parkway, we had the engineer in and we talked about kind of what the stormwater issues are. Uh, I heard from the state, they wanted some revision to the attachments to the agreement that you signed or approved. None of it will affect the bottom line, but we had to make those changes and resubmit it to them so, uh, they could authorize the, the release of funds and, and that should be happening. Well, actually, they, they had the material now for, since last, uh, last Friday. Um, you may have read, there was a meeting of the Missouri Partnership, the economic representatives from the Department of Economic Development, the Chamber, the IDC kind of put together and, um, I was there and people were there. Uh, it was really a, a significant event in that, uh, these are people who, all they knew about St. Genevieve was the statistics that they see. They'd never visited the town, they don't have any sense of the character of the community. Um, and, and it really makes a difference and you could kind of see it in how they talked about, "Oh, we didn't know it was so special down here." And, uh, so the next time somebody comes in looking for something, all things being equal, they're positively inclined towards St. Genevieve. Um, Sandra has established relationships with, uh, several of the, the people in that department and will, uh, over the next however long nurture those relationships and hopefully it'll get some attention from that department, uh, when they have prospects for, for employee, employment in our community. Um, we had the final, final, final inspection on the safe routes of school. There've been several final inspections along the way, but, uh, so that project has been signed off by the state and everything is as it should be. Still, I reported to you at our last meeting, kind of, I probably had problems with the Burlington Northern Railroad on getting somebody down here to, to deal with the drainage issues on Little Rock Road. And I still haven't got anybody down here, uh, although I think I've finally gotten to the point where the woman with whom I'm dealing understands that you gotta, they can't do it from their desk, some, somebody's gonna have to be here. And, uh, I told her, "Just pick a day, any day, and we'll meet with her." And I've yet to hear from her on what that day will be. The, um, there's another meeting of the Missouri Lime, Mississippi Lime Citizens Advisory Panel or Council. Um, as you recall, Eric and Alderman Stupi and I had met with them expressing concerns about, uh, backups on Highway sixty-one, uh, with the trucks trying to, to get into the plant. Uh, they reported at that meeting that they have done some significant, uh, rearrangement and internal moves that are designed to ensure that those trucks get off the highway. And, and, and they figured out how to, to, they, to, to get them onto the site and if they can't get right into the plant, where, where they're gonna put them. So I think our, they took us seriously and, and they, they are, um, looking to, to improve that. They're also concerned about their employee entrance and, uh, have asked the state to consider giving them a turning lane, which I told them we would certainly support. Um, and so, uh, they're gonna continue to work with the state to try and get a turning lane, but in the event that there is a backup, they are gonna follow Alderman Stupi's suggestion, at least with the passenger vehicles, and that is, if they go down to the area where they had rocked for, um, the, uh, Fly Ash project, and you're gonna use that as a way to get off the road and turn around and get back into their, into their site. So, uh, I'm pleased that they're listening to us and, and taking, taking action in response to our concerns. Um, when the electrician was doing work on the fire damage in the, um, street apartment building, they noted some potential problems with the wiring in kind of the office storage area, uh, corrosion, uh, which they, they thought could have been a result of the, the fire. Uh, and, you know, when you have a fire, they say certain corrosive chemicals are released into the air and they come into contact with the copper and you usually got problems. So, uh, I had them prepare me a report on what they found and what they thought the cause was, and, uh, I sent it to the insurance company to make sure it would be covered under our, our insurance, and, uh, and they agreed. So, uh, we'll be, we'll be replacing some of the electrical system that we didn't do in the first kind of phase of the electrical work, uh, with the approval of the insurance company, so, so, so the cost is covered. Um, couple of things that, that aren't on the, uh, well, one thing that isn't on the report that I'd like to kind of discuss with you is, um, there's a, chapter three ninety-five of the city's codes has to do with snow emergency routes and, and there's a provision in here for the snow routes, uh, to have limited parking, uh, and it requires a, a declaration by the street commissioner, uh, that it's a snow emergency or a weather emergency and people are supposed to, to not be parking so you can remove snow. I had a couple of complaints about people parking on Fourth Street this time around, which is the snow route. Uh, appears that there have been some signs up over the years and some of them are missing, so we're gonna, gonna replace the signs. Uh, and I just wanted to address this announcement by the street commissioner language. Uh, if we're gonna, gonna enforce it, we're gonna have to follow our own regulations and, um, I think we need to decide who the street commissioner is.
Would you call it, I mean, would that be Dave's call?
Well, yeah, I just think you need to make a designation of him or me or somebody as the street commissioner so that when we make the declaration, we're consistent with our, you know, we're not gonna do it tonight, but-
We need to change that to say public works director?
Could, either way, one way or the other.
Or give him another title?
You could make it to say it's the city administrator or his designee.
There you go.
You know, and then whoever I wanted to designate, I could do that.
That might be the best way to look at it.
Yeah. All right, so I'll prepare a, a ordinance to amend that section for our next meeting, uh, the purpose of which will be to, to make it so we're following the process. In the meantime, we'll get some signs made and get them up where they're, where they're missing. That concludes my report.
I think the street department did a hell of a job cleaning the streets. I don't care what anybody says. I went thirty miles south of here on October, I've been thirty miles west of there, and their streets is ten times worse than ours.
Dave and the guys, I thank you for your, for your compliment.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that too. Uh, you know, for, for what Dave and his crew went through as far as the equipment and the amount of snow and, and that job he did, it was excellent. Because I did have somebody that lived in Farmington come over here and said, "Wow, your streets are really looking a lot better."
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, and so the, the crew was out there, they did their job, they did an excellent job, and we should be very proud of them.
I agree.
I just wish he wouldn't poll in front of my driveway.
There you go.
That was on purpose, Carl.
I know, you do that all the time.
There's always somebody.
Yeah, Farmington didn't have, nearest got a few successes.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, uh, going in that, Dave, you're first.
You can make it up here with your head.
What Martin was saying on the, the equipment and stuff.
I wanna thank William Nobies for coming in, you know, working on our trucks and helping us get back on as soon as we can, and Barley's, they, uh, they come in right away. We've got a pretty good relationship with both them and, like I say, as soon as we needed them, they was here, so. Any questions on my report?
That tree on Lanning Street, are you just gonna throw something in there or what, what are you guys gonna?
Well, we're, uh, waiting on, uh, somebody to come grind it down, uh, 'cause the stump's still there, so we wanna get that ground, ground down, so, but they haven't showed up yet, so.
Just with those barricades and stuff.
It's for those, there was a big oak tree that was hollow, really, I mean, I guess ants had eaten it or something, but, uh, right, it's that one that was right there, almost on the street, and so we, we had that one removed.
On Point Base Drive.
We filled that hole in today. I guess it just sunk and, you know.
It just didn't-
Yeah.
-take the first round.
Didn't take the first round, so, so, yeah, we, we went out this morning, put some rock in it, so.
But when we decided to do that, we knew we were gonna have to just keep, keep maintaining it over the winter till we could more concrete, so.
So how's the material holding up as far as what you used and, you know, future?
Well, we're doing good right now. I just, just had four more loads of, of salt come in, so, and then I got some more calcium chloride coming, so, uh, for what we're gonna get this weekend, if we get any, I hope not, but we got plenty, so.
Okay.
You know, and as far as our equipment goes, I mean, this has been going on for twenty-eight years that I've been here, I mean, every time something breaks down, we pull it in, fix it and get back on the road, I mean, it's just stuff that happens, you know?
I made to say it earlier, this stated it probably, but last year we used hardly go salt.
Yeah, very little, yeah.
We probably used that much.
Oh, every bit of that. We used right at, probably I'd say between eighty and ninety ton, you know, during this, but it got to the point where it wouldn't eat, you know, wouldn't, uh, dig into the snow anymore because once salt gets down around twenty-four degrees, it quits working.
Is there an alternative that you use for salt?
Do I?
The side of calcium.
Beet juice?
Yeah.
You know, I didn't put a can opener in my budget to open all of them, you know, beet cans.
Where would you get that?
Well, you know-
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Yeah. Did you hear that on the news where they're using beet juice?
It isn't cheaper and it isn't more effective. It's more environmentally responsible, but it doesn't get you a better job.
All that beet juice does is turn all night.
Turn?
Gets slick, it gets wet and then it goes back to slick, it turns all night.
I've seen it, I guess we're someone put it out with the salt and the sidewalks, it kind of a purplish color and, I don't know, it's bound to stain something, it stains everything else. But, yeah, obviously you can't open it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else for Dave?
Thank you, thanks a lot, thanks for the compliment, I appreciate it. Passing on to the guys.
Do they sell beet juice by the gallon?
Anything about the, uh, fire department's report?
I will tell you that, uh, I had a meeting with, they came in today. I, I was, uh, in the Cedar Hill Fire District and, uh, they're, they're a volunteer fire district and they put up some like big, kind of like election signs, you know, big four-by-eight signs asking for people to, uh, to, to join the, the fire district, so, for the, the fire department. Um, so we were talking about getting a little more aggressive on soliciting volunteers than just announcing it in a meeting every now and then, that we're putting, the reporter reporting on it in the paper. So, uh, I think he's gonna give that some thought and talk to the crew and see what we can come up with, be a little more proactive in, in, in kind of marketing the need to, for, for volunteers. His long-term concern, although he says it probably won't be his problem, but, you know, it's just, it's just hard to get younger people involved these days than, than it used to be. And, yeah, a lot of people are saying the same thing because of the influence of video entertainment, electronic gadgets.
Any questions on Eric's, uh, you're stick around for the, uh, the ordinance that we've got for the grant, right?
Yes, sir.
We'll go into that, we'll go into that then.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Steve, are you taking Steve's place tonight, Terry?
I'll try.
All right.
Feel like I'm back home. Thank you, Mayor.
Pass that around, thank you.
I hope you all have a copy of Steve's report in front of you. There are a couple of things I would point out to you. Steve, uh, this time put the end of the year water loss in there on your back page. Uh, it shows the water loss from beginning of October to September, uh, for the year. The water loss was nineteen point one percent. That number has improved drastically over the last three or four years. When, uh, when we started here in two thousand and ten, the water loss was around forty percent, so it's now down to nineteen point one percent.
There is no perfectly tight municipal water system.
No, sir.
What's kind of the ultimate goal for water loss?
You know, the, the, ultimately, it's as good as you can get. The, the standard in the industry used to be fifteen percent was considered excellent and over the few, over the last few years, the standard in the industry has dropped down to where if you can get to ten percent, they're considering that excellent. Uh, I, I, I'm pretty confident that the aggressive stance that this council's taken and, and the staff has taken to, to improve, that we'll get to that ten percent mark. Uh, so, I mean, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with it being nineteen percent now versus the thirty-eight, forty percent that it was when I first started trying to calculate these a few years ago. Uh, we've got about fifty meters left to put in, which might help a little bit. Uh, there's some other meters to be matched, uh, to be calibrated at the water syst-, at the water plant to make sure that the actual numbers that we're producing are completely accurate. They could be off three percent, which would still be in the standard, and so, let's say they were saying we were producing three percent more than we really are, then that would drop that number back down to sixteen percent right there and still be considered accurate. So, uh, nineteen percent is pretty good for where we're at right now. When we make these water main replacements, uh, those numbers are gonna get better. Uh, I'm sure there's leaks that we can't find, that won't surface, uh, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep working on it.
To your knowledge, are there any current un-metered users, like ball field or?
Yes, to my knowledge, right now, yes, there are still some un-metered, uh, places. Uh, for an example, I am not sure this building has a meter on it. Uh, so, that's one. Uh, their, their municipality-owned facilities right now are the only ones that I'm hundred percent confident in that are un-metered. Uh, so, you know, you, the only thing we will do when we get to those will be quantify that water. There won't be no charge for it because it's municipality-owned, of course, but we can then quantify. Uh, we, we're still, we don't, we don't completely, on some minor things, get, like if there's a fire, we have to estimate. You know, the fire department's busy, their public service people, uh, they don't want, you know, they don't always have time to stop and quantify the amount of water they use. So, there's some, there's some little tweaks where we can still pick up one or two percent that, that is not really lost, it's just unaccountable. So, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with this number for this, for the progress where we're at right now.
To, to me, it, it sounds like a lot, but-
It is.
And you think most of it is leaks we just never know about?
You know, for an example, there was a town I was, I, I helped, uh, fix some of their leaks one time. We hired, they, they hired a, a company to come in to put an ultrasound on the water system. And ultrasound tracked where the leaks were. They could show every time you turned the faucet on, every time you turned the faucet off, and they'd show where the water went. And we found a lot of leaks in that community, a lot of leaks. There was, I, I wanna say there was like fifteen leaks that was around three gallon a minute. They never surfaced. Take three gallon a minute times fourteen hundred and forty minutes in a day, times three hundred and sixty-five days, and that's a lot of water when you multiply that out. The problem is those kind of facilities cannot track that water on the asbestos pipes. They can't track that water on, on PVC pipes. They can only track it on the cast iron pipe. So, we might get to that when we completely get through the obvious ones, and so it's getting much better.
Have you charted as far as like, where the water loss would be, if, would it be between them? The main line and the house?
No, sir.
Serving or?
It's before the water meters, or we would be accounting for the loss, we'd be accounting for it. It is water right now that is going someplace that is un-metered.
Right there close.
Yeah, most of the time, it's in the ground and it just doesn't surface. AWWA has standards that allows brand-new water mains to leak so much, just because their joints going together and they, they have an amount of leaks. We have a lot of pipes, they're old, and, uh, I think that this, uh, project that we're proposing down the road, that'll fix them. I mean, St. Mary's Road has a lot of leaks and we just have to kind of, every time we have a water leak, we lose fifty, eighty thousand gallons, we just gotta kind of estimate. So, we stop those and improve, I believe that.
Wonder what about Steve, does it come involved sometimes, you know, when you have a big loss that we don't know where it's going and?
No, if you look at that, if you look at that spreadsheet, you'll see by the month.
Right.
We, we've had some months that were as low as six percent, we've had some months that were as high as twenty-eight percent, and typically those are because of the billing cycles. Don't correlate with the production cycles when you have those big increases. So, that's why we, we average it. So, less than twenty percent is not a bad number for where we're at. I'm, I'm pleased with it for now, I won't be pleased with it in three years from now, but right now, pleased with it. Uh, one more thing I would bring up, uh, Steve did not put in his report, one of the training things that we've had to work on this year, or this month, was, uh, the state, the, the federal government has, uh, come up with a global standard, uh, standardization of material safety data sheets. Uh, any of you that are familiar with MSDS sheets? MSDS sheets are a thing of the past now. Uh, it's now safety data sheets, so that, it's called global harmonization, and so all of our staff has went through that. The suppliers of all the chemicals will be required to provide the new data sheets by the end of two thousand and fourteen. Everybody will be required to be in compliance with that sometime shortly after, I don't remember the date, but we've been through the training. We're, we're having to change all of our safety policies to be, you know, compliant with that, it's just so everybody in the world can get along, that's basically what it's for.
Well, that's the answer. I didn't see, I didn't know I could just change the form.
We're gonna change the form and the world's gonna be a happier place. Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Sandra?
Good evening. Uh, you have in front of you, we'll start with the bright shiny object first, this is the Missouri Official Travel Guide, and, um, these are out all across the state in Welcome Centers and, um, they will be, um, distributed to individuals as well. I just wanted to point out to you that, um, actually through the good work of the members of the Tourism Advisory Committee, um, St. Genevieve has more listings than, in the, the business listings, we're on, um, page one oh six. We have nineteen businesses listed, businesses and attractions listed in St. Genevieve, um, more than Farmington, more than Cape Girardeau, more than Perryville, more than Kimswick, more than most of our competitors. So, that's, that's really a coup for us, those are free listings. And, um, on page ninety-eight, I'm sure you've already seen that, um, they chose to, um, highlight the old brick house, it's one of their photos in the book, which is always a nice thing. And then we have a paid, uh, appearance in the travel guide in the back, um, where people can ask for more information, we're on page one hundred and forty-one with, uh, a preview of the new look of our cover for our brochure. So, um, just want everybody to be familiar with this so that when you're talking with people or you have guests in from out of town, um, please let them know that there are more copies of this at the Welcome Center, if they would like to visit with us and our staff down there. If you'd like to stop by anytime and pick up extra copies to have at home so you can all be little tourism ambassadors, we encourage that. Um, so, uh, since the last Alderman meeting, um, I reported on a lot of extensive numbers at that meeting, so I thought I would just kind of hit the high points with, um, visitor charts. Uh, so you can see there in your first, um, uh, chart that, um, our numbers in November continued to be quite a bit higher in terms of total visitors to the Welcome Center. Um, we passed the calendar twenty-twelve numbers in October, so everything from this point on is, we're way in the black now, um, after, um, you can see that in October, our, our blue line was higher than last month, or last year of this month, and also in November. So, we're hoping for a strong December. Last week's weather didn't help us any, we're really hoping that, um, the weather will be kinder to us this weekend, um, and that we'll end with some good numbers. Um, I just recently had to send in the end of the fiscal year report to the state and all of these numbers are tracked very closely by the state in terms of, um, the money that we're eligible for and the, um, results that we can show from in terms of total number of visitors to our destination. Um, and there at the bottom, you see the adult and student passport tours. Um, in November, the adults were about neck and neck with last year, which was significantly lower than the year before that. Um, we saw a, a large decrease in, uh, adult passport sales in the month of November. Uh, you know, maybe next year we can- You know, maybe next year, we can make a difference in that, but I think that time of year, you just see people, you know, that the houses are closing earlier and closing some days of the week, so they're less likely to buy a ticket that gets them into all the houses, even though those don't expire, they're less likely to do that, they're not, just not as, as incentivized. And so, of course, we will stop selling passports at this time of year until about April of next year. So, then I wanted to point out to you, of course, with the weather last weekend, we were not able to have the majority of the activities associated with the Holiday Christmas Festival. They had to be rescheduled for this coming weekend. And so, we do have a listing of all of the events that have been rescheduled, and this is available at the Welcome Center. It's online on Facebook. If anyone out there is on Facebook and they just type in "Visit St. Jen," they can pull up that information, they can print out one of these at home. We certainly hope to see lots of people out on the streets this weekend, weather permitting. And I really want to recognize Annette Rolf and the people on her committee because it takes a lot of work to put this together, and they certainly had to put a lot of work into it to turn the whole thing around and present it again the following weekend. And then the other, the other event sheet that's listed here is the Christmas at the Fairgrounds. This event is scheduled for one, excuse me, noon to six on Saturday, and so there are a lot of children events associated with that. They're going to have a petting zoo. This is primarily a fundraiser to make improvements at the fairgrounds, so please get out and, and support this with children or grandchildren. The St. John's downtown renewal project is going to be sponsoring some children's ornament making in the Welcome Center in the afternoon on Saturday from noon to four. So, I also wanted to point out, as Martin said, we've had several meetings and objectives that we've been working on since the last Alderman report where I visited with you. One of those has been that we sponsored a social media training for any business owners and events people who were interested in using social media as a means of marketing, either their business or their special event that has to do with tourism. And so, we hosted that at St. Genevieve High School in the computer room, and people were able to do hands-on practice with that. I think it came off very well, people really appreciated it, and I think we'll probably even do some more of that because there's probably an opportunity to follow up with those who learned a little bit and also to do some more in-depth training with people. And then I also wanted to thank the Master Gardeners. I've met with them a couple of times over the past few months, trying to improve the exterior appearance of the Welcome Center from the street level. And they've taken this on as a project for 2014, and so they have already come out and planted some bulbs, so we'll have a little more color around the, around the Welcome Center exterior next spring. So, we'll start to see the results of their good efforts when the weather warms up. Anyone have any questions for me? Well, that's my report, and if we can ever help you with any additional information down at the Welcome Center, we get calls all the time about the ferry. It was closed today, by the way, but we get calls all the time from people who just want to know what's going on. Last weekend, we were able to present information on Facebook almost in real time as we found out what things were being rescheduled. And when I posted the flyer that you have in front of you on our social media pages, we have three different pages, one of them got a thousand hits just overnight of people that were very anxious to receive that information, and so it's been a really good means of communication for us to get the information out more quickly.
Relative to the ferry, there was a court holding yesterday discussing closure because the water level was dropping. Ron Inman, the chairman, said that they're going to investigate possible work they could do on the Illinois side because it's such a narrow little inlet where they have to dock to allow them to keep it open in lower water conditions, although there wasn't anything specific.
Thank you. Okay, any committee reports, anyone? Financial report for November? All in favor? opposed? Minutes of November the fourteenth? Should that be there, nineteenth? That is the fourteenth, huh? Where's the other one? I got the other one?
Yeah, the special meeting.
Okay. All right. Fourteenth, somebody made a motion, second? All in favor? opposed? And closed minutes of the fourteenth, she's passing out now. All in favor? opposed? And minutes of the special meeting of the nineteenth? All in favor?
Yes.
opposed? Okay, thank you. At this time, it being seven thirty-six, we'll open a public hearing. The mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit to operate an auto body repair shop at five ninety St. Genevieve Drive, which is located in the C1 General Commercial Zoning District. Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
This is just the hearing to start with. Anybody in the audience want to speak? It's been through planning and zoning, and you've got the report here as board. Is there any questions? Yes, sir.
Is this a redwood formality on this? I've got a lot of phone calls about this body shop, but we've got a lot of businesses closed, buildings in town, and they're going to have to go through the same stuff? They want to change to a different?
Only, only if the use, every zone district has a list of eligible uses, and you can pursue those uses without any special permission. Just get your permit, building license and, and open, or business license and open up. There are other uses in a zone district that, that are considered possible, but they may have some negative consequences. And so, you consider those as a special use permit, some communities call it a conditional use permit, so that you can identify the things you think might be a problem and, and put conditions on it that would mitigate those problems, but you're still going to allow them to occur. That's, that's where this falls. If it isn't allowed as an entitlement or as a special use under a permit, then you have to rezone it to an appropriate zone district. So, this one, for this use in that zone district, it requires a special use permit, but that wouldn't apply to every business.
Because they worked on cars before, they couldn't kiss.
And, yeah.
I don't understand.
Now, you need, what are they going to be doing different than you kissed it?
It's, it's a body shop as opposed to a garage, mechanical work. They're identified separately in the zoning order.
Right. You know, if it was a mechanical shop, it wouldn't be a problem, right?
Because Kiss did just mechanical work, no actual body work.
I don't think they did body work.
I don't know if they did, I remember them doing it there. So, that, that was an issue.
That's the issue.
That's the reason.
Any, any other questions, comments? All right, so we'll close the hearing at seven thirty-nine. And we can ask for a vote on that, right? For that? Somebody want to make a mo- if, if there's no objections or anything, and somebody wants to make a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I would approve it. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Like it says at this particular time that they wouldn't include a paint booth, are they going to have to come back if they include paint booth?
Yeah, if it, it wasn't part of their application that the planning and zoning meeting?
They're a body shop, a body shop has.
Well, he said he was going to paint, it just wasn't in part of the original application.
He said we can come back.
Yeah, it's, it's not a problem.
You don't have a problem with that.
Well, I got my other bikes out there that is suitable for conditions right now, and I just wanted to be here without any problem.
I'm just trying to see, why would you want to come back again? Get it all in water.
I would like to fly at night, but I think you have to come back.
It's got to go back to plan.
But it wasn't the original, but if it had been in the original thing, we'd be looking at the whole package.
Yeah, we talked to them, they said let's come back.
I mean, if we're approving the body shop, we're approving.
I don't think you'd have a long process the first time, but if you do, then it should go pretty quick.
They wouldn't have had a problem that night.
No.
Right, that's what I said, it should go pretty quick. Once everything's approved.
Okay, you got the motion to the second?
The Planning and Zoning Commission passed this, everyone present at the meeting, is that correct?
It was unanimous of the membered present.
That's what I meant to say, thank you for correcting me. And I'd also like to say that two of those commissioners are on the Board of Alderman right now, but they're not here.
That's right, that's true. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thanks you guys, thanks for your patience and working with us, appreciate it. Okay, resolution two thousand fourteen oh five? I gotta read, I'll read those, don't I? A resolution amending Article Two, Purpose and Limitations, Section Two, limitation of the bylaws for the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council. There's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. A resolution two thousand fourteen oh six, a resolution authorizing a loophole VX3, three point five, ten by forty millimeter rifle scope from the police department to be declared surplus property and providing further authority.
Deer season's over, I think.
So, how do we dispose of it? Besides hitting?
Advertise it.
They just won't use it down the road, or? There's something wrong with it, or?
No, we had a sniper rifle that we had in service, we are going to convert that to a regular AR.
Sniper usage?
So, we will put it out for bid and try to purchase the parts to, to get the receiver to make a, the standard AR-15 like we carry in the other vehicles.
But hey, to dispose of the scope, you'll advertise it?
We will advertise it and take the highest bidder, yes.
Do you ever put anything on eBay or?
We have talked about that in the past, as far as the PayPal account. What we've done in the past is offer it to our local gun shops and whatnot, but I know there's a few that, that are around that, that do this type of business. But we're certainly not opposed to, to the highest bidder. We like to support local businesses as much as we can.
Move, approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution two thousand fourteen oh seven, a resolution of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent to apply to a grant from the St. Genevieve County Community Development Fund in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the St. Genevieve Police Department for the Project Power Pro. As we'll stay up there.
Yes. This is going to be a grant application to install a generator for the police department that would service the computer systems, and I believe also the heating and cooling in the event of a power outage were listed as a cooling station and a heating station for the emergency management, the basement portion. So, this would update the existing power panels that we have at the police department and also provide generator power for, for the police department.
Will it run the whole building or just the police department?
We're on two different meters, it would just be the police department side.
Wouldn't we be better off applying and doing the whole thing? I mean, I never did ever understand why this never was generated, a generator here.
My involvement is the police department, I mean, I'm not.
I know, but this is where.
It wasn't just a grant for law enforcement?
No, not, not specifically. I, I don't know, I mean, I could re-investigate some of this with it being two different.
You haven't applied yet.
I have, no, I have, but I would need to figure out what the technological limitations are or requirements.
We'll look into it.
Is, is this like the command post, meaning an emergency?
That's, this is the command post when we had the flood, and so I never could understand why it never would.
Does it designate a command post for emergencies or?
Since then, though, we've built the firehouse with the generator, and I, I believe with all the communications equipment, that in the event of another emergency or some disaster like that, you've got that with the conference room and.
Kevin, you couldn't, you couldn't move all your business here out to there and run your, run City Hall? There ain't no way. I can run my business, and I know you can't run this.
It's worth investigating.
Yeah.
I mean, is, is there a place designated, if there's a national disaster or an emergency?
Yeah, it's in.
That we're supposed to go to the fire department or whoever's?
I think it in the emergency preparedness plan.
There, there are redundant backups for, for everything. Like I said, I know currently, we, at one time, we're, we're listed as, as part of the evacuation for one of the schools to, to come to the basement here for holding area. And like I said, I know it's listed as a cooling station. The primary cooling station is, is American Legion, and then we're, we're listed as a backup cooling station for, in the event of a heat.
I'm going to ask you, how about warming up? Because last year, when we had that.
Yeah, heating and warming.
Nobody would open the American Legion Hall, First Baptist Church opened up and offered the people. Because all the motels was booked.
And, and along with this is, is going to be our efforts to clean out the things that we were, that were declared surplus previously in, in this year. So, we're just asking for your approval to, to submit the grant, and like I said, we can, we can amend that to include service for the, for the entire building. But we'll certainly investigate that and see what that, what that looks like.
Is this really part of the police department?
No, it's City Hall. My, my understanding. Correct.
So, where would you put people for heating and cooling?
In the basement.
In the basement?
Or, or here, I mean, wherever space was, was needed, if this was, right. And we certainly have handicap accessible issues.
Move, approve? Whenever you, if you want to amend this to say.
Get a couple of extensions.
Because the grant needs to be in before we'll have another meeting, so if you want to amend it to say that you approve the whole building.
Entire building?
If, if we can.
I know typically, the, the foundation, I certainly don't want to speak for the foundation, but have so many applicants.
Right.
You know, if we're looking at doubling this, this price, could potentially throw the whole thing out, I don't, I don't know. But if you're doing it, you might as well do it.
Submit companion applications, so maybe it would go under one.
And you might, there might be economy of scale of being able to do it with one versus two, and I don't know if there's a way to feed both meters.
Maybe we can start with the police department and then add the City Hall in.
You might limit the knowledge of.
Next time.
Putting in generators and just, that you'd have to do.
Or we convert, or we do other conversions and go to one meter. Anyway, we, we can figure that out, so is that the way you would like to word that?
Yeah, we were just talking, like, go ahead and do this one, and then start another one for the rest of the building.
Okay.
Two separate ones.
Okay.
So, go ahead and do this one.
All right. Approving this one and the ability to, and you're approving another one for this building at the same time. Would you do that, you okay with that? All right. We have a motion or a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. Any old business? Don't think so, new business? We got bill number thirty-nine fifty-seven, first reading?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Schulte Rentals LLC to grant the use of the Brooks Drive right-ofway for access to Schulte Rentals LLC's property. First reading.
Move to approve.
Can we kind of explain it? Yeah, I was going to say, what is it? Brooks Drive is the drive that you go down to access the 911, and it stops short of the end of our right-ofway. Schulte Rentals owns the property that is beyond that, behind the EquipmentPro facility that they own. They have a contract, and they're working out of a part of the building that they can't easily get to for moving materials in and out. So they want to gravel in a area where they can pull a truck in behind the building and come out, but they have to use our right-ofway for that. So they've agreed to put in sufficient base and to agree to maintain it as long as it's there, so that it's safe and not a liability for us, so that he can continue under this contract and hopefully expand his employment base. So it seems like a pretty win-win situation to everybody.
And I like number four, too, that if they fail to maintain it, then we can cancel the right of use.
All in favor? First reading?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we do a second? Yeah, because that would get them in there. As soon as they get a break in the weather, they can do it.
Second.
All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second reading of bill number 3957.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Schulte Rentals LLC to grant the use of the Brooks Drive right-ofway for access to Schulte Rentals LLC's property.
Move to approve.
Second. Your call.
Alderman woman, Zerway, yes. Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Openface.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Brimkill. Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 3957 now becomes ordinance 3898.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comments? Yes, sir.
Bob Mueller acting as the chairperson of the Tourism Advisory Council. I just asked, does that require a second vote?
No.
Okay. Thank you all.
Then if there's anything else, any other business? Carl, for this next one, I'm going to have to turn the meeting over to you since I'm directly involved in this one, so...
Can we reset a date for this?
Give it.
I'm kidding.
So...
All right. We don't need to change chairs or anything.
Nah.
All right.
Just needs to leave this bill.
Do we need to open a...
No, it's just a request. You just need to approve the certificate of appropriateness.
Well, I want to look at it real quick.
Hopefully.
Okay. Do you want to read the title of the strong...
A request for certificate of appropriateness from Retro Grimmager for the demolition of two outbuildings located at 223 Merchant Street.
And this did go through landmarks, and landmarks did approve this. The buildings are beyond repair, and they felt that they should be demolished. Did you find somebody to come and take the roof, or...
I'll check that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Landmarks approved.
All in favor? See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries?
Okay. Thank you. You all had any...
Let me hand it back to the mayor.
All right. Thanks. You had in your mailboxes, I think, or in your letter from Frank Sprouse, who is the chairman of the Landmarks Commission. I called Frank today before I knew that he had given you all the letter to talk about really what he... Mostly what he said in the letter, and to just to reiterate what was in the letter, he's, I think, suggested that we take a hard look at the landmarks' ordinance and for this board to make some changes. I think he maybe proposed three of them there, one being look at maybe restricting it to the ages of the buildings, or changing the boundaries, or make it where vinyl's okay in the historic district. All of which come up from time to time, certainly. I do know that we have a tendency, a lot of people in town and even people on the board, at times have a tendency to mix up landmarks' ordinance rules with building code rules. But there has been at least some over the past months of things that have gone on that I personally believe that need some looking at as far as the landmarks go. And I've talked to the Landmarks Commission myself, and what I'd like to do, and not act specifically on that letter, and I've talked to Frank about it, and he's certainly in agreement that to take a couple people off of landmarks himself and maybe one other person of his choosing, and two of you off of this board and form a small committee, he thought we could accomplish it by the end of January and look at the landmarks' ordinance. The Landmarks Commission is really... They're just doing kind of what the rules tell them to do. And we have a landmarks district that obviously includes the downtown area and a little bit broader area. And things fall into that, that whether they're you or myself may consider them old. We've had 1950's houses and '40's houses recently in the last six months that's come before landmarks, that do they really need to or not. But the fact that they're in that district, the rules say that they have to. So that's one area that I would like for them to look at and try to address some of those issues, and certainly vinyl, although I think percentage-wise, out of all the requests to use vinyl in the last, I don't know how many applications there were, but 97, 98% of them have been approved by the Landmarks Commission. So most things do get approved from landmarks, although, again, I personally feel, and I know there's a few people on this board and a number of citizens feel, that maybe we need to look at the scope of landmarks and maybe not make it... Maybe try to make it a little more hassle-free for people to get things done that are in historic districts. And if that's changing the districts, putting ages on what we deal with, but I think it can be looked at relatively quick. We changed the rules for Landmarks Commission, and then they've got something to go by, but it's got to come from this board as far as the rules being changed. So if that's all right with everybody, I think that's the way to maybe look at it. Yes?
On the committee, I think you mentioned, what, three landmark people and a couple...
I was thinking maybe two off of that, two off of this, along with Brenda, Martin, and myself would sit in on it also, so...
Is there any way that we can maybe have a couple outside people involved in this process also besides landmarks in the city council?
We could...
They might bring something to the table that, you know, that we wouldn't see.
Sure. Sure. I can... I don't want to get it too big.
No, it might be too big.
Of getting everybody together.
I would think two landmarks and double, you know, councilmen, and a couple people from the community besides the other ones you mentioned would make a good committee.
All right. We can ask one or two other people outside of this and landmarks to be on it. Now, also, in conjunction with that, Martin is, I don't want to take words out of your mouth, but he's also putting together a group of people, citizens, to review the building codes and to get started on that. And I mean, that'll be a whole nother look at a whole different...
Martin and Brenda and Jimmy are doing it. Yeah. But we're looking to adopt 2012 building codes because we're already so many cycles behind. But we, the staff, Brenda and I and Jimmy, are going through the codes to come up with recommended local amendments to address some of the things that just aren't appropriate for St. Genevieve. And then we'd hope to have a committee then that would look at the codes and our recommended changes to make sure when we adopt it, we are adopting something that's practical for the community and not just this code that was written by some committee in Michigan.
Right. I think that's a great idea there because, you know, we can get maybe some contractors involved and...
Yeah, a couple contractors, citizens who've been through the process, you know.
So at this point, is there any... A couple of you that would be interested in doing this thing as far as landmarks?
I'll do the landmark.
Okay. You would be...
I'd be interested, it's probably not a day to meet on.
Not Wednesdays.
Is that all right with my... Okay. There for you two. Great.
Do you need a landmark?
I got all kinds of books.
Okay. If there's anything else, not anything else?
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Absolutely. This will be our last meeting of this year, so, yeah. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.
I missed the Thanksgiving dinner and the reports and everything.
It's going to be Christmas next Wednesday.
So will you just pay you for that?
Whatever. But it's going to be next Wednesday here.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Get an extension for that.
Is that what you wanted?
Have a conversation.
Okay. All in favor, German?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.